Okay, welcome everyone to the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee Special Meeting Monday, September 27th, 2021. We will take a roll call. Robin Denson, City Council. Lee?
Rodenberg, President, City Council.
Tracy Markley here, City Council.
And then we also have President, City Clerk Josh Stecker, Police Chief Kelly Bucy, Public Works Director Jeff Langham, Mayor Kit Kuhn, City Administrator Tony Piaszeki, Federal Lobbyist Dale Lern. Did I miss you, Joshua? State Lobbyists, Joshua. People are moving around on my screen. And Community Development Director Katrina Knudsen. I think I got everybody. Welcome, everybody. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 19?
Move to approve.
A second, Beth.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Great. We'll get right to business because we've got a lot together today. And if it's okay with you guys, I'd like to switch things around just a little bit. We'll start with our federal update from Dale. And then I'd like to start by talking about the 2022 legislative agenda. And I think going through that is going to be a natural segue into additional issues that we want to add to that agenda, additional state issues, as well as planned RCO requests. It's kind of all part of the agenda. Does that sound okay to you, Councilmember Rodenberg and Markley? Okay, then Dale, we will go to you for a federal update.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. So my update will seem somewhat DC speak, but hopefully if you have any questions, just, just ask me. I was trying to explain, I've explained it to this group, but sort of the federal government works what I used to call a reverse bell curve, but I'll call it now like a skateboard half pipe with a lot of activity in the beginning and then sort of a, sort of a down the pipe and then comes back up near the end of the year to finish it off. And it's a year-long process. We're right at the cusp of coming out of the pipe. They have their August recess. They had the early part of September. This week is quite interesting and monumental to how they will finish the year. Thursday, they had promised to vote today on the infrastructure bill in the House and up and down vote from the Senate bill. Significant increase from existing infrastructure programs and, and funding. It's going to be delayed probably Thursday is when they'll have said vote. The quote unquote progressives in the House want to ensure that what they call the human infrastructure bill moves. And they feel if there's not significant movement on the human infrastructure bill, which is like child tax credits, Medicaid, Medicare expansion, things like that. If they, if they allow for the hard infrastructure vote to happen without significant movement on the human infrastructure vote, that they'll lose their leverage. So that'll kind of all come to a head on Thursday. I foresee an up and down vote on that Senate bill because those programs lapse on Thursday as well as the end of fiscal year federally. And so we will likely see a vote, positive vote on infrastructure, which we've talked about prior on that bill. Now, how that moves the, the, the human infrastructure debate post Thursday, it's hard to know at this point. And the fate of that in the Senate, especially with some of the moderate Democratic members is unknown. Appropriations has sort of been stalled because of these two large infrastructure debates. Again, the House traditionally and this year has moved most of their legislation on, on funding the government, but the Senate hasn't really, hasn't moved at all really in any significant way. And typically, they start negotiating by this time with the House and then finish it all up in December. Also, which kind of complicates all of the issues federally is we have a debt ceiling requirement in the federal government. You have to raise the debt ceiling once it gets to a certain level. Treasury typically would, it will institute emergency measures if there's issues with that. There was a debt ceiling increase put on what's called the continuing resolution. Again, the fiscal year ends on Thursday. Without a continuing resolution, the federal government shuts down. The House passed a, what's called a CR continuing resolution through December 3rd and attached the debt ceiling raise on that. We do think the Senate, there was supposed to be a vote today, could be tonight. I haven't, I haven't checked in the last few hours and likely to reject that and, and we'll have to debate sort of a debt ceiling issue as we get more into next month. So again, the Treasury. What that means to the city is all our sort of issues on infrastructure, whether it's human or hard are sort of awaiting all of these different mechanisms to move in some fashion and they will. And as typical, we will see sort of the next few months wrapping up all of these things. And then a nice big, big present as per usual in the December timeframe. Sometimes it bleeds into the, the, the next year, but that's very rare. Usually they move right up to the Christmas, right up to the Christmas holiday. And that's sort of where we are. And again, we're coming out of the, the half pipe. And Thursday will be a big day to see how they move through October, November and December.
So question on that, if you listen to the news, you know, if, if they put it down to the wire, you know, a lot of, a lot of people don't get paid. I mean, it's just a lot of wasted money. Even one week, it's just, you know, hundreds of millions that get wasted just to roll it back. Do you think they're going to do that again?
Everyone says no until it happens. There was a few debt ceilings ago. They only, this only happens, I'm not saying this in a partisan way. It only comes up when a Democrats in the White House. If you look at Mitch McConnell's statement from the last time they did this, when Trump was the president, he said it's ridiculous to, to even fight over the debt ceiling. But now he's saying they're fighting over the debt ceiling. So that's just, that's, that's just factual. And last time we fought over it, when Obama was the president, Ted Cruz, Ted Cruz filibustered the raising of the debt ceiling and we defaulted, I mean, temporarily. Now, they quickly came back and then raised the credit limit. That could happen and people were threatening that. Of course, everyone at this moment says, no, 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 we'll never, we'll never default on our credit. We have, it's a credit card. We've already, we've already spent that money and the credit cards due. To answer your question, Mayor, I say it's unlikely, but it's possible.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Dale, am I understanding you correctly that all of our, our couple of infrastructure asks that we made, we should hopefully hear by the end of the year, but no sooner?
Yeah, we'll know by the end of the year, for sure. 100%. People are aware of them and we're, we will 100% know by the end of the year. And again, it's, it's a, it's a half pipe and it's quite different from the state side and we're coming out of the half pipe. We were at the bottom of the half pipe on our skateboard and now we're starting to come out of it. How that comes out in the half pipe, again, I think Thursday will be very instructive on how we move the rest of the year. We should know a lot more then. I think the vote will be yes for the, for the bipartisan infrastructure, the hard infrastructure bill, which was great. It has that Culver program and has approximately about a 35 to 40% increase from current federal transportation programs, which is good.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? All right, Dale, thank you very much. Okay, Joshua, would you like to take us through our legislative agenda and kind of guide us through that? And if there's things that we should be considering that we didn't last year, we can kind of wrap that in?
Yeah, sounds good. Hey, everybody. Nice to see you. So just a little bit by way of reminder. We talked about this a little bit last time, but it's just good context setting. We're coming up on a short session supplemental budget year. I don't think we'll go into special session. So we're really looking at like, needs to be a very limited and narrow agenda for the year. Either things that we think we can get through in 60 days or that we want to tee up and start trying to talk about for the next long session. The, I do think there's opportunity capital budget, though maybe pretty narrow opportunity. And then just if you saw this week, the state revenues continue on the operating budget side just continuing to be extraordinarily strong. So there's money in the operating budget. We have a two-part legislative agenda. If you remember, the first is our front page legislative agenda that we handle legislators. Those are really our top priorities. And then we have our policy document, which are items between essentially just direction between all of us about what your sort of secondary priorities are that we don't necessarily share with legislators, but there are things that we're working on, not as our main priority. And then for today, I put together another list of just items that will, I believe will come up that are relevant to the city for this, this coming year, some of which are on your agenda, both first or second page. So for last year, we asked for, again, for those projects on state route 16. I do think they're still relevant. I think it's highly unlikely at this point that the legislature comes back in special session before the regular session. But we've got to keep them on our agenda and keep pushing for them. And I do think there's the chance they will be talking about it during the regular session starting in January. Last year, we asked for the sports complex as our capital budget request. We got RCO grants for that. If you, or grant for that, if you called but did not get the local community projects, requests that we were asking for. And I do think that would still be viable. I think that Senator Randall with a tough race coming up next, not this November, but November after is going to be in a position to ask for more.
Let's, let's stop there just for a second. If that's okay. And Councilmembers Markley and Rodenberg, let's, let's weigh in on these as we go. That's probably easiest. So for the transportation budget, Josh, you're saying that we should probably keep these three items on and just keep pushing. Are you okay with that, fellow council members?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
The one thing we need to do this year that I think got a little confusing last year, or I guess this year, and what we need to do next year is make sure all three of our representatives and senators know, know the projects that we're working on so that we're all talking about the same things because it seemed to get a little confusing with some last year. So they're all pushing for the same projects. We'll try and do a better job on that. And then the sports complex, didn't I read that we got 500,000 from one of the programs, right? And you think it's worth going back again for this project, Josh?
Well, I think what I would say is Gig Harbor has not been your delegation's choice for a local community project for a couple of biennium now. And I think you can legitimately make the argument that it's your turn, so to speak. In speaking a little bit with Tony in between our meetings, it sounds like you can spend money on the sports complex in the next 18 months. And so that seems like a project that is ready to go. If it's not the sports complex, I think you could make a request for another project. But it's, my impression is that staff think the sports complex is ripe to ask again.
Also, I'd like, I think letting, letting them know that this is their whole district or a lot of it. You know, we're talking Rosedale, Arleto, Cromwell, the whole keeping it. So I mean, these fields are not just going to be used by citizens. And so if we let our twice this legislatures know that a huge amount of their, consider their supporters, their voters are going to benefit from this and come into our town, then there's a higher chance that they'll support it.
And as far as expenditures go, Jeff, we have all the permitting and designing work that we're doing next year, correct?
Correct.
Construction, construction, when could it start in 2023 or could even start late next year?
Depends on how fast we can get a design together and permit approvals. I don't think that I would recommend we start construction in November or December on this project, though, just because of the weather.
So we'd wait until like March of 2023?
Yeah, put out to bid in December, January and then construct, start groundbreaking in March 2023.
Is that doable, Josh?
Yep.
Yep.
Josh, we would be going for the 2 million for the local community projects and 500,000 from the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program.
No, we would just go for the 2 million. And I would, because the wildlife recreation program is a grant program, it's ranked. I doubt they'll replenish that fund for additional projects. So I think we would just ask for the 2 million. And I should say, you know, 2 million was our request last year. I think that's, in terms of political feasibility, that's a good starting point. In terms of how much you can actually spend, you know, Jeff, Tony, if there's additional information you have that we need to tweak that a little bit, let's make sure and do that and be prepared that we may not get the full 2 million.
Okay.
Or a full amount, whatever it is.
Councilmember Rodenberg, did you have something you wanted to say or question?
No, I didn't have a question, but I, I do recall the importance of keeping our ask, both infrastructure and RCO, consistent from year to year when we don't get them. So it's always on their minds. So I think that's important. Josh is right on following his, his own advice.
I have a question, which is kind of like the elephant in the room. At least it is to me. When we're asking for the sports complex, since the Y is really raising the money, we're really asking for 1B, but we're packaging it at, which is our portion of it. Because the Y, our agreement with the Y is they're raising their money and we're asking for 1B, which is to the side of it, which is still kind of part of it. But we're presenting it as a package where it sounds really good. Is that my understanding? Great. Perfect.
Okay, so Josh, is there money left in the land in, of the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program? Or was that all allocated last year as part of the biennial budget?
It was all allocated last year.
Okay.
Yeah. There is the off chance that, I can't remember exactly where we were, we were rated 25th out of 80. I was going to say, there's always the chance that a project doesn't actually spend its money and you, and they go back down the list, but I don't think where we are in the list that happens. And that wouldn't, that would happen regardless of whether we asked for it or not. I do want to make sure on this, before like we officially adopt this and, and really head off charging down the road, I'd like to have one more conversation with Senator Randall in particular to make sure she's comfortable making this request. I talked to her earlier in the summer and she was, but let's tune that up. If she comes back and says, I'm just not interested in making this request, then I'm not sure it would make sense for us even to go ask for it.
Okay.
Josh, when do you plan on having a conversation timeline, timeline wise? The reason I ask is that we're contemplating getting a consultant on board this fall to start design of the project.
I would start probably this week, reaching out to her and just trying to have that conversation. And then if we do go forward, and Jeff, I don't know if we could do this before the design is really tight, but I would love to get her out there this fall to walk around. But the representatives too, but you know, I keep going back. I really do think that our senator is going to be key on both of these projects. I think she's in position to get some things.
Yeah, and if she needs data for how badly we need these fields for our kids, we can provide that. I, I can, I've got the sports groups ready and willing to do whatever is necessary, write letters, give data. You know, they know how many thousands of kids are trying to get on these fields and how much of a problem it is right now for our kids to find fields. We, I mean, leaving, 1B is going to be great, but the litter fields are what we actually need in the community right now. That's, that's the need. And so hopefully, you know, presenting it as a package and giving her all of that data and letting her know that it's not just kids from Gig Harbor city limits that are playing on these fields. It's, it's going to be kids from all around the state coming to compete here. And that's, that's really an important piece. So hopefully, you know, if, if she needs any data, just, you know, let us know because we, we've got it for her.
Sounds great. I'm sure she'll like that.
Josh, just prior to you speaking with Senator Randall, is there anything we can, a timing must be important there. Is there anything we can do to prime the pump in the days leading up to when you meet her? Because if, if we speak now, it may get pushed aside. I mean, I would think that not a bum's rush, but certainly teeing it up to her prior to you sitting down with her would be best.
I think my sense would be that we're going to do multiple bites of the apple. You know, I, I feel like I have a good enough relationship with her that I can just have a real informal conversation about, hey, this is the direction the cities go on. I want to make sure we're not, you know, heading down a dead end here. And then once, you know, if we get the green light like we have been or like I have been, then I think, as you say, it's the bum's rush. And I'd like to put the full court press on and have you all, you know, talking to her and then getting her the information that she needs to make the case and arming her up. And I would, just to be clear, I know I've said this before, we would do the same with the House members. Not going to leave them out at all, but, but my primary concern is the Senate.
Right. And we've been talking to her for, for years about this and I've never heard anything other than total support. So we should, we should be good unless there's other things on her plate. All right, then moving into policy issues, Josh.
Yeah, sounds good. Okay, so I'm going to take that as thumbs up to move forward and laying the foundation on that and moving forward there. We asked for help on the multifamily tax exemption. That was on our front page. The legislature passed that bill. I think we should take that off. They're not going to do anything on it this session. And I, and then we had authority, longer-term authority for virtual meetings in local emergencies under the Open Public Meetings Act on our agenda. That bill didn't get through, but it will be talked about again this session. And I think there's a pretty good chance it gets passed. And so as long as, you know, you still feel like this is worth putting political capital behind, I think it's something that will be open for discussion.
I feel like that's got to happen. So I don't know if that's what we want to put our political capital behind. I feel like maybe there's some other things we want to do, but our capital behind and we just want to support that. How do you guys feel, Tracy and Lee?
I would agree with that.
Assuming we can find some other things to support. And I think, I think we will.
Okay.
Absolutely right.
Okay, sounds good. So let me just put a hold on that then and we'll circle back to it at the end. So, so then what we're have so far is just the transportation capital. That's perfect. So we have an open list for policy. And then on our back page document, we have shared revenues, which I don't think you need to put on the front page this year. We have a statement about inconsistency between the GMA and the PSRC. I do think there will be some discussion this year about the GMA. Maybe there's the opportunity in those discussions to highlight the inconsistencies that you're seeing with PSRC. But I otherwise would not suggest making this a major push. I don't think the majority is going to have an interest in doing that.
So you're suggesting those two items, finance, general government be moved down?
Just keep them where they are, which is on the back page. We then have a category of infrastructure and economic development.
Well, I've got them on the, on the front page.
Yeah, sorry. That's, that's the, it's a separate, separate document, actually. Do you have the other agenda document?
All I have is this one here.
Okay, so.
So if it's a different one, don't worry, don't worry about it. I'll get it.
Okay. And I can put the other one on my screen too. It just has, right now.
The pages are numbered. What page is it, Josh?
I'm looking at Josh Stecker, just to be clear.
It's, it should be, it should be the document just before that one that you have Tony in the packet. It's, it's the one that has the sports complex and the transportation projects on it. It's a single page or it might be two pages this time.
About this one.
That's the legislative agenda. And then the next section is, is what Josh is referring to is the backpages.
Okay, all right, got it, got it. It's all considered one document. Got it.
Yeah, but these are not our priorities. These are just things that we're supporting opposing, but they're not on our front page.
Understood.
So we have a statement inherent infrastructure on, you know, supporting TIB and FIMCA and, and these other public works assistance account, these basic infrastructure programs. I, and that seems to make sense to me. I don't think it's going to be a huge issue this session. We have a statement in there about the wastewater nutrient cap, which is something that we were sort of helping you keep track of last year. I haven't been doing anything on it this, I'm sorry, maybe that was earlier this year. I haven't been doing anything on it in the last couple of months. I will note that one of the legislative committees is having a work session on this topic in the next few weeks. And I'll get that over to you, Katrina. I was going to listen on it. I don't think we need to do anything else unless you, it's, this is not an issue that is broadly of interest to the legislature, I guess is what I would say. The same is true with the expansion of the Narrows Airport. I haven't heard anything lately on this. You, you all probably know more, but I think this has been pretty quiet lately. I don't know that it's been talked about anymore. But certainly.
Tony and I attended the, what was it called, Tony? I don't remember the, what the meeting name was, but it was talking about the airports and what we were told in the, by the person running it was that the Tacoma Narrows will be taken off the list for expansion.
For expansion of commercial.
Of commercial, yes.
It's called the Commercial Aviation Consulting Committee or something like that, CACC.
CACC, yeah.
Worried that as other airports get more commercial traffic, that they're going to push more general aviation traffic at, over to Tacoma Narrows. And we want to make sure that doesn't happen.
We're trying to, I want to talk to council about support of a letter to the aviation committee and, and, and talk to Derek Young about this because there's a lot more flights already happening. And I really believe as they push more into Brimerton, yeah, we're going to get a lot more general at that airport. And I think Pierce County is eager to do that. So even if they take it off commercial, it doesn't mean it, it doesn't get really ramped up. So we, you know, there's, there's a legitimate concern about that.
Just as a side note, the Tacoma Narrows Airport Advisory Committee does have a couple openings on their board, like voting openings. So if you know of anybody you'd want to put on there, Mayor Kuhn or Tony, you know, we can think about maybe who, because I have sit on there just as a, you know, as a liaison, I guess, from the council, but I don't have voting authority or, you know, or anything like that. I just get, get the updates from the meetings. But if there's someone in the community that's passionate about this, that would be, you know, someone good that could speak on our behalf, you know, there are a couple vacancies there.
Is that, is that just a, do they have any voting? Do they, can they vote?
Yes, those positions are voting positions.
Okay.
Great.
You know, I wonder if Heims would be interested now that he's not going to be a council member. So.
I don't know, maybe.
Yeah, I'm not putting myself for it, obviously.
Come on, Kit.
There you go, Mia.
Okay, so I think we, I think we want to keep this on here to make sure that everyone knows, keeping an eye on the issue. Okay.
Yeah, it's one to keep an eye on for sure.
Yep.
The next one is Culver funding, which is very appropriate. This is one actually, as we go to the, the page of other issues, is going to be, I think, pretty significant conversation this legislative session and is a priority for AWC. So, but I don't know if you have any specific examples that would really, I know we worked last year on a few examples. So this one though, would be something worth thinking about.
We have, we have a great example.
I was going to say, I'll let Councilmember Denson take it away.
Well, I don't need to go into it now for time, but yeah, we, we have some strong cases to be made for that, for sure.
And we have Congressman, Congressman Kilmer working hard on this Culver issue for us as well. So he's very, very involved in it. So I think we should keep it on.
I think the question in my mind would be, do you want to move it to the front page?
Let's, let's put a question mark by that one.
Yeah. Um, we also have support Main Street legislation. This is both a, a budget issue as well as just the continued policy support. We had a bill on that last year that was pandemic focused that we supported and helped coordinate and came in and support up. I don't think there'll be anything this session that I'm aware of. I don't think it makes sense to move it as a priority or to remove it.
Okay.
And then our last, sorry to interrupt, our, our last category is local control. We have two sub, some topics. One is land use accessory dwelling units. And this is about preparing to defend ourselves again against mandate. against mandates to require ADUs. And this will be talked about this session. There is going to be a push this session to mandate cities to take density. This might be one, two, in my opinion, that you might think about putting forward as a higher priority. Just because I know it's going to be a topic and I know that your community cares deeply about it.
Josh, isn't the, isn't the issue more than just ADUs? And even talking about requiring triplexes, duplexes, fourplexes in all zones?
Yeah, it kind of depends on who you talk to and, and what the proposal is. We've seen lots of different proposals with kind of different flavors. You know, a couple of years ago, they passed a bill that was incentive based that gave grants out to cities that were willing to take a number of actions to sort of encourage ADUs and density. Last year, there was something similar, a piece of legislation passed for would have required you to include housing availability analysis in your comprehensive plan, but that was not funded. And so it is not mandatory. That was House Bill 1220. I think this year we're going to see again, like I said, a, a number of different flavors. I can't predict all of what they are, but they'll all be around sort of density. And there's a lot of focus on ADU specifically, but it is kind of a subset of the overall density conversation.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
How much does our vote matter? Because that, you know, AD, ADUs don't, they really don't work. I mean, they work if someone wants to do it. Otherwise, you, you better do a tax incentive. So every bill that I've seen, they've actually wrapped something else to disguise it. You know, they've wrapped the triplexes. And so it's really not what your vote, what it's wrapped like. So how much of our, how much, if we do take a stand, how much of a say do we have?
Well, I think there's two things. I mean, your, your delegation wanting to make sure your delegation weighs in on the right side on this. And that, you know, we're helping with the effort to, to make sure that if it does pass, it passes with that. With a beat up vote count, that's important. And then the other thing is, you know, as we did before a couple of years ago, Mary, you probably remember this. We know the AWC will be leading the charge in opposition to density mandates and the city can really step forward in alongside AWC as an example of jurisdictions that would be impacted and that are helping fight it. And some of it too is just, you know, some of these legislative fights do come down to people power. And having us there, willing to make phone calls and willing to reach out to legislators helps in the overall effort. So we may not necessarily be the thing that pushes it across the line, but we could certainly help.
Okay, I think, I think that's good. I think it's, it's usually not really about ADUs, but something to disguise. So I think we need to, and having, having, working with AWC, I think that's good.
And the language in here right now is pretty general about being against legislative efforts to mandate specific land use policies. And then it calls out ADUs, but it includes other stuff as well.
Do you think that's too general? I sort of like to keep it that way.
No, no, I think it's good that it's fair. Yeah. Okay, looking at new issues, I know Josh, we've got a number to bring in front of us, but because Chief Bucy is here, I imagine he has an idea of something he'd like.
Plenty of ideas, but as you know, in the last session, police reform was the hot topic. And law enforcement was poised and very willing to make some long overdue corrections and adjustments. But legislature kind of forged ahead without even paying attention to law enforcement, specifically WASPIC, which is the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs, who normally carry quite a bit of sway in Olympia. But they got kind of figuratively patted on the head and pushed aside. And so we ended up with some very extreme police reform bills. And even the authors of those pieces of legislation agree that there are some corrections to be made, but mild resistance to some of them. From a law enforcement perspective, we, we've already actually seen a reduction in our service level in Gig Harbor based on some of these things. So I, I would hope that the city would get behind at least the WASPIC attempts to, to address these, these bills. The past, I just came out of a legislative agenda meeting with WASPIC, three hours worth. And we're going to focus on four bills and, but, but two that I'd really like to see the city kind of bring into focus are House Bill 1054 on police tactics. And House Bill 1310 on use of force. Those are where we're seeing actual problems for us, for our officers responding. Trying to catch bad guys, trying to do the right thing. And there's some ambiguities built into those bills as well that really kind of make the officers question their actions on the streets. So I could get into more depth if needed, but I think as WASPIC develops their proposed, actually, they came out with some proposed legislation of their own and counter to it, knowing that a full repeal is not on the table. But they're common sense, real life solutions. And I'd sure like to see the city kind of endorse that somehow and be, be a little bit vocal on that.
Josh, can we craft some language that says something to the effect that the city is supportive of the legislature working with WASPIC? I hope I'm saying that right. On, on, I don't want to say corrections because you never want to say something's wrong, but on, on tweaks and, you know, some adjustments to the laws to correct ambiguities and anything that's causing unintended consequences and lowering service levels, something like that, general enough that, because things will move and shift through the, through the session, I'm sure, between legislators and WASPIC.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. And the question I have for you, chief, is, I think you kind of said it, but I want to make sure that I'm clear. You know, there will be legislators pushing for repeal, overturn, you know, that movement. And then there will be what's politically practical, which is sort of clarification and fixing some of the ambiguities. Are you wanting it to be in the, you're wanting to be in the fix the ambiguities camp? Is that correct?
Fix the ambiguities and then a couple of slight corrections. And I'll use the term correction, Madam Chair.
No, that's fine.
But yeah, there's some use of force things that are really, that need to be adjusted. So as WASPIC develops their, their documents a little more, I could certainly forward that to this committee or present it as such and give Josh a copy as well, if that's the right track to take.
Chief, you said you like, you said you'd like to see the city get behind that corrections. How do you picture the city doing that?
Well, this, this particular committee, this process is, is I don't know, I'm not, I'm not overly familiar with the mechanics of it, but if we put that as part of our legislative agenda, I don't know how Josh spends his time. But I'm certainly going to be speaking with our representatives and our senator about these very things, so.
And Councilmember Markley?
Yeah, I was just going to say also, Josh, if you can let us know when we can provide testimony on these different things when they come up, because I don't know, do you know if this session is going to be virtual again or are they going to be in person?
I think it's going to be virtual.
Okay, so I know the process for giving public testimony was a little crazy with the online thing. You never knew like when to log on and what time you were actually going to speak and all that. Do you know if they've resolved any of those bugs or if it's going to be kind of the same like guessing game this time around?
I think it'll probably be about the same.
Okay, well, the best you can, if you can let us know when to be there to testify so we don't miss that, that would be very helpful.
And if I can play a role in communicating that to you, I'm certainly happy to do that.
Yeah, because we'll need to know what you need us to say.
Correct. Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, and I think Mayor Kuhn can probably speak from his experience, particularly, you know, usually he was the one testifying on behalf of the city. And we do our best to, you know, get him talking points and, you know, same thing will be going forward. The other thing I was going to say, one distinction about the legislative agenda versus the back page is when we're doing reports for you, our written reports, we really do hone in more on the issues that are on the front page. You know, if something blows up on, you know, the other issue that we didn't talk too much and there was 5G and cell site. And that was on the back page. If that blew up and there was a bill that was making progress, we would have elevated that even though it wasn't on our front page. But just in terms of alerting you when there's hearing opportunities, those types of issues, we tend to focus more on the front page issues.
So is, are these concerned, police reform concerns on the front page right now?
I think the proposal is to put them on the front page.
Okay, I would say yes, let's do that for sure.
Got this one in covert funding so far. Josh, as considerations for front page stuff.
And I think I heard, maybe I'm wrong, correct me if I am, maybe about density as well.
Yeah, I heard that.
Yeah.
Okay. What else? And then we'll come back and see if we can narrow it down if we need to.
Yeah. You know, I sent you the document, it's just kind of the list of other, other issues. Do you, it's, you know, there must be 14 bullets in here. Do you want me to walk through each bullet? Or do you want me to just kind of give you the ones I think that?
Let's start by seeing if Mr. Langham or Ms. Knutson have any in here or anything otherwise that they would like us to focus on.
I, I don't have any additional topics, projects to talk, to focus on. I'm just waiting to hear back for, from the Dale and the federal government on what grants we might be receiving.
So Jeff, you're not, the providing resources to help cities use supplemental bidding criteria in public works contracting or infrastructure funding such as public works assistant account, none of those are really too, too high on your radar?
No, I haven't seen what the supplemental bidding criteria they're looking at. I'd be curious to see it when it comes out. I'll keep an eye on it. And the public works assistant account, if it continues with what, what the state did last year, I'll just be happy with that. And we'll continue trying to get that money.
And Madam Chair, one clarification, I, I would consider that basic infrastructure funding to be essentially what we have already in our second page policy document. And then I can just say briefly, we've been following the supplemental bidding criteria. This is a proposal, kind of the Community Economic Revitalization Board, C-Board, no, C-Park. I can't remember what C-Park is. They've been doing a study on some of this. This will be resources for MRSC, the Municipal Research Services Center, to work with small cities to make sure they understand how do you supplement all criteria so that you can be more selective potentially about the types of bids and the bidders that you're getting when you are going out on public works contracts. And then also giving resources to C-Parks so they can adopt new rules and policies about how cities do that.
Okay, Ms. Knutson, anything you'd like this year?
Thank you, Chair. No, the, the landing success regional units density issue. I think that that continues to be a priority being discussed at the Planning and Building Committee, in particular regarding local control and how the Growth Management Act is set up to allow for local jurisdictions to determine how they grow and the look and feel of their communities. And I think that from, from discussions within that committee, that would be highly supported to continue watch over bills that would potentially strip that away from the city. I know that the Bill 1220 did have accessory dwelling unit language in it that the governor ended up vetoing because it would give the same rights for urban and rural. And there was the concern that ADUs would proliferate in the rural area. However, I agree with Josh. We see that the ADU issue as well as potential for single family densities to be removed from jurisdictions is something that will likely come up this session or next and we should keep our eye on it.
So Josh, just, just so you're aware, we are having a meeting next month on on density and growth targets, you know, and Councilmember Himes has been our, our person with Future Town Regional Council. And, you know, I don't think it's going to happen, but he wanted the county or the state to give us credit for growing faster than other places that were supposed to grow as fast as we have. You know, we don't think that's going to happen, but at the same time, you know, maybe we should not have to have the amount of pressure that the, that the Growth Management Act is pushing down, being that we actually have grown more than other counties. So we are actually going to have some study sessions in October on this. So it is, it, you know, this density thing is, is big on us because we've already, we've already grown faster than a lot of other places that are saying they are, but in reality, they're not.
And Josh, well, the, the mayor and Tony and I have met with Pierce County folks. And we'll be taking that up on a regional level as well within Pierce County with the cities and also the county and at the PSRC level. In particular regarding the GMA and PSRC inconsistencies on the top of the, the document that was put forward. And as the mayor said, right now, when we're working through our growth targeting, it's, it is highlighting the inconsistency between PSRC and those goals and policies and the state, what the state GMA requires. As we know, the state demographer will not put out the 2024 population targets from the state until early next year, whereas PSRC put them out last year. And so there's kind of a moving target from a base year out through the end. And so anything we can do to assist with those, to narrow those inconsistencies or eliminate them would be beneficial to the city as well.
Yeah, and it's good for you to be aware of all this.
Yeah, for sure. Appreciate that.
What else on your list jumps out to you as things we need to be thinking about?
Do you have an interest? There'll be an AWC, oh, I'm sorry, did you say Josh or Jeff?
No, you, Josh.
Okay, thank you. Did you have an interest? There's going to be a bill coming from AWC on sales tax TBD authority. Allowing it to be, allowing your TBD to be renewed every 10 years? Okay.
I don't think so. We, we figured out how to work with that pretty well when we needed to.
So right now we have a TBD with a sales tax. It was voted on by the people. It's good for 10 years. Current law allows us to go back to the voters for one more renewal and then that's it. And then this, but this bill that AWC is pushing would allow just as often as you want every 10 years or as many times as you want. Okay.
How do you feel about that, Councilmember Roden, Morgan Markley?
I think Tony was implying it's a good thing and I think I agree with him. I think we ought to be able to go back every 10 years and renew it instead of being constrained to just one 10-year renewal if we needed it.
I agree. People still have to vote on it so they can vote no. They don't feel like we need it.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So let's add that to our issue document.
To our agenda or second page?
I say second page. How about you guys? Since we already have three on our.
Second page is good. Keep our top three, top three.
Okay, the other one that I was curious about coming from City of Tacoma is that one authorizing you to use speed cameras in high pedestrian zones. I just was thinking of your downtown core and wondering if that's an issue down there for you.
That's a Chief Bucy question.
It depends on who you ask. In the downtown core, no. Oregon Boulevard, yes, but don't let me speak for you all and the mayor yourself. But it's been my understanding that the council over the years has been largely opposed to red light cameras and speeding cameras. Anything big brotherish, correct me if I'm wrong.
I think there'll be a, you know, I got a ticket in Chalhoub and it's sent by a place out of Arizona. And it's not a very popular thing, so be careful what you wish for. I'll just say that.
I, I would totally agree with that, Mayor, yeah.
I don't wish for it.
What do you think, Councilmember Markley? I have mixed feelings about it because other eyes on people speeding, but yeah, no one likes to get a ticket.
I, I think it's mixed just because of the amount of complaints we've been getting recently about speeding. But, you know, if the chief isn't for it and it doesn't, and the council would most likely not want it. You know, citizens aren't going to want it because they don't want to get caught. So, you know, I don't know. I guess I would maybe leave it up to the chief to provide more input on that. I don't know.
That's clearly a policy decision made by you guys, but I would also add that you factor in the impact of the courts. Because they would
Yeah.
Quite an increase in. provide an increase in workload there.
And I think that, that even though we have had complaints, I think the majority of those were found to be invalid. So that being said, what's the, the trouble versus the benefit? I mean, it's a whole can of worms with, in my opinion, very little benefit to fix a limited problem.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Yeah, as Councilmember Rothenberg pointed out, and we've just done a lot of studies and they were not what people keep whining and complaining about. And the machines work, you know, we tested them.
Okay, so it sounds like we're not going to add this one to our list and we'll have to see if Tacoma fight that out.
I'm just hearing, I'm just hearing an authorization for 10 more officers, so that's.
Well, so if this kind of thing were to be of interest, would it be some other company somewhere else managing this? Kind of like you just had this, you know, you get it from Arizona, but you got the ticket in Poughkeepsie. I mean, the city wouldn't have to be managing sending out the tickets, right? Would that be someone else doing that? But they would still have to appear in our court. Is that how that would work?
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
Well, I know with the red light cameras, the, there is two companies that do those. They set up all the equipment, they rent it to you on a monthly bill charge. And then they send the videos of all of the violations to the city and a police officer has to review them. Just to make sure that they are valid. And then the, the ticket is issued and then the people have to come into court to either pay it or fight it, whatever it is they want to do. So I, I'm assuming there'd be a similar sort of thing with this, even though, you know, speeding is pretty pretty cut and dry. I, I know that the, the cameras for school zones are not reviewed, that stuff is not reviewed by the, a police officer. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, Chief.
I, you're correct, Tony.
I don't know how many, I don't know how many people accidentally speed. But I do know that my GPS tells me blocks ahead when there's a red light camera. I was driving on Sunday through, on River Road through Poughkeepsie. I think that's where it was.
I need one of those. Speed bump before we do speed cameras.
Something you want to tell me or?
My GPS lets me know there's a speed trap ahead and asks us if it's still there and you choose yes or no.
And then it's too late for me.
I'll just remind you all that we're recording this.
Just kidding.
But seriously, though, we would have to hire more officers to handle that and we'd have to hire more court people. I mean, it would seem like this would just create a snowball that would just start going and I don't know.
Okay.
Can of worms for very little benefit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds like we've spoken. Josh, anything else? And then Councilmember Rothenberg, Councilmember Markley, if you guys have any things on your mind legislatively for the session? Or anybody else?
I do not.
I think we pretty much covered it. You answered my question about the virtual versus in person. So I guess, yeah, just making sure we're kept up on what those links are, when they're, when they're in session, you know, so we can watch and keep an eye on on certain bills. That'd be great.
Okay, so we have three priority issues. We have covert funding, we have land use slash accessory dwelling units, and we have police reform. Josh, is three too many or can we do all three? Okay, so do we want to do all three council meets? Yes?
Um, yes.
Okay. So what are the next steps then? Josh, you're going to talk with Senator Randall to make sure the sports complex, so we'll button that up. Otherwise, what, what's next? When do we need to meet again? When does this go to council?
I'll get you a draft revised documents. And I, Josh Stecker might know more quickly than I do if we're scheduled already with council.
We are, I forgot where it is.
Yeah, we have a placeholder on. I think it's the first meeting in November. That's just a placeholder. I think last year we did a second meeting in October. I think either way, we'll probably need a special meeting of IGA to preview it again. So it's kind of up to you, whatever you need.
Just for clarification, those top three, they don't take away from the importance of the sports complex and the Highway 16 improvements, right?
Nope, so we'll have five things on our agenda, which is, which is fine. No worries.
Okay, so sounds good. So we'll call another special meeting. You guys will see that notice for us to review and finalize this. And then we'll take it to council. Sound good?
Make a motion, I make a motion with close during the meeting.
I think we're good. Anybody want a second then? Okay, all those in favor?
The one thing, Councilmember Dinsen, it is on the list to give a report tonight from this, so I don't want to catch you off guard since you don't have a lot of time to prepare, so just let you know.
All right, I got my notes.